Seven dollars and thirty-one cents. Payable liabilities, twelve thousand fourteen dollars thirty-two cents. Accounts payable, hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. Three hundred twenty-five thousand to the elementary school. And three hundred ninety-five thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars to VDOE. Eighteen thousand five oh seven forty-one to the Hampshire Retirement System for a total of nine hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-three cents.
Well, make a motion to accept the manifest?
I will second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Public comment? Mr. Morelli?
Long as the camera can hear you are good. After listening to the comments from the Selectmen's Board last meeting, I had a conversation with Selectmen, the former Selectman Bill Lord. And he provided me some details on the Baraki Junkyard case. The town was awarded by the courts ten to eleven thousand dollars in fines and fees. This confirmed, this was confirmed, confirmed by the Madison resident comments to me and also in the minutes from the one of the Selectmen's meetings in two thousand twenty-one. In my conversation with Bill Lord, he stated the town has every right to purchase fees and fines. This was confirmed by reviewing multiple New Hampshire state statues. The Madison zoning ordinances explained by the ZBA attorney in the chair of, at multiple zoning board meetings. Owners are defiantly contributing, continuing to rent properties during the ZBA appeal process, thus accruing fines the ZBA attorney explained to the applicant's attorney during the November meeting why the fines would be occurring. The longer the town hesitates and waits, the higher the attorney fees will be, and also the fines will be higher. And we keep hearing from the Selectmen that you don't want the fines to be real high because they'll, you know, what are you gonna do with them? Madison is in a position of strength and must act appropriately in it. Remember, STRs are businesses and courts look upon them differently. They're not afraid to give them fines. It's not like the poor couple that's trying to make ends meet and the town's going after taxes. It's a totally different game. Bill Lord did explain to me the fines were awarded to the town just sitting there from the junkyard. And he did push the town to go forward after the junkyard. And if he didn't do that, the town would never got the ten grand plus, the junkyard would probably still be there. Bill did his job. There was no reason in the world for this group not to follow his lead. Please reconsider.
Did he say how much it cost to get that ten thousand dollars?
Well, he explained to me that, and I was looking at some of the paperwork, it showed how long it took to do it because it kept sitting. And there was an occur, there was a fine that was just sitting there to get pulled, and the town didn't go after it. Is what I was under, what was told to me.
I don't remember that.
Any further public comment?
Nordell Gagin, one three three Pond Wood Drive. I'm on my eighth carload of people. Last week, the short-term rental people, owners called the police on me for policing their people. And they paid four thousand dollars for the week for the people to be there. They're down in Massachusetts on their boat somewhere. I am stuck with their screaming clientele. And that's where I'm at, over on the other side of Madison, so. Just give you guys the heads up, thirty years of it.
Do we have a court date yet on the ZBA?
Nah, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah?
Hi, I'm Paulette Lowry. I am on the Veterans Committee and the VO, Veteran, excuse me, Veterans Advisory Committee.
Hold on one second. You are, you are on the agenda.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're actually first on the agenda, so stay standing. As long as there's no more public comment, you can keep going. Are we all good with public comment?
My name's Tom Stevens. I'm at seven four two Plains Road. I was here perhaps a year, well, a little more than a year ago, requesting that the Selectmen petition the Commissioner of DOT about a speed reduction out there which we desperately need. That's provided for under RSA two sixty-five sixty-two. Chief King was on board with the speed reduction. A letter petitioning the Commissioner was sent. I did confirm that. Nobody saw fit to copy me. But I do know it went out because Linda told me it did. So been over a year. What's happening?
We have not received any response from them, but we can follow up with them.
Gee, after a year, don't you, I mean, it kind of begs the question.
What's the, what's the speed limit now? Do we know?
Thirty-five.
And nobody does thirty-five. I can tell you that right now.
We sent a letter petitioning to reduce it to thirty, I believe.
I appreciate, I think the police had trailer, the speed trailer up for that, going around that corner?
Yeah, for a little while recently. I guess there's some study material can come out of that or something.
Appreciate that the PD did that too. I mean, that was a good reminder for all of us to.
Right, and then it's out of mind as soon as it's gone. And the prime offenders are, Coleman had meant too bad this year, but the lumber trucks, they love to whistle through at fifty or fifty-five, and no way in hell they are gonna stop. Unfortunately, I, I, I'm in the position that Route forty-one biceps our property, so we're continually having to cross, cross the road. Lots of near misses. A lot of times, people are going so fast, they can't slow down. They just swerve around us. My daughter, my daughter got tapped last summer by a vehicle that couldn't quite stop at time. And that's when I came unglued and came in to check with the people and see what we could do. A year hence, and we're no further along than we were before. So if you, I guess this is a request, that you, some sort of follow-up. I worked for DOT myself for several years. I don't know any, it was a long time ago. I don't know anybody there anymore, but. I do know, I can hunt around myself and maybe do some inquiries, but as a citizen, I'm not gonna have the stroke. I mean, the RSA says Selectmen of the municipality, so it really has to come from you guys.
Well, I just went through that piece of road about thirty minutes ago, actually. As you know, I work at the transfer station. We have a speed limits there. Nobody buys my. The only thing that I, I mean, we certainly can follow up, from my standpoint, we can follow up. But unless we do aggressive speed control with the police, it's not gonna have any effect. I hate to say that, but it's not gonna have any effect by lowering it to, if you can lower it to ten, they're just not gonna do it. But I would be inclined to support.
In particular, that we're at the, kind of the south end of the lake where you first hit it and it's so pretty and striking. People are coming off of those, those flats from Oscepee and fifty or, I wouldn't say fifty-five, but fifty is a reasonable speed through there. There's no, there's no vehicles, excuse me, there's no, there's no houses to speak of. You don't have the congestion that immediately pops up as soon as you hit Silver Lake. We bear the brunt. We're kind of like running interference for Nichols Beach and every place north of us because we're the first ones that they hit and they're still bailing along, you know, it comes, there, there is a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit sign that nobody really pays any attention. By the time they hit Bryant Drive and up, they're, they're still, they're still doing fifty miles an hour. It's very sinuous through there. The sight distance is god awful. I turn my radio off and everything before I pull out of my driveway and sit and listen, usually for fifteen seconds because I'm gonna hear them before I see them, because the sight distance through there with those horizontal curves is so bad. It really is, you know, they do put up with it somewhat down at Nichols. I think by then they've slowed down a little bit because they, you know, they burn through us.
Well, we can certainly follow up with the letter and see where it's at.
Can we send something to Chief King about requesting? And we're gonna have our own people do it, but we certainly could request some help from the Sheriff's Department, maybe the State Police. We can kind of rotate through there and hand out, people will get derift after a while. But I think that's the only thing that's gonna have any impact at all.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong.
I mean, you do recognize our predicament.
Oh, yeah, like I said, I drive over that road.
But I believe the chief's argument was that if we lower it to thirty, he has an easier time enforcing it if they're doing fifteen over.
Yes.
Something, something along those lines.
Chief King mentioned that. You just can't go below thirty because you can't give citations for anything below thirty unless it's a school zone.
Okay, so that may have been the idea between going from thirty to twenty-five. He wanted thirty.
Right.
I have a suggestion. How about putting rumble strips before you hit, you know?
It's a state road. We don't have control over it.
You can't, or you don't have that ability.
How about speed bump, five foot high?
Oh, we'll definitely follow up with the letter and we can have our department do the best they can to police that area a little more heavily.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep.
I like John's approach, threefold.
Yep.
What's that?
Your threefold approach, local, county, state, all, using that area.
Even if you get one day out of each one of them plus ourselves, that gives us a portion of three days in some access. I would imagine Friday nights are pretty bad.
Yeah.
Because everybody's rolling into town, and that's why they roll through.
Is that something?
Although you know some of the worst, I do New Hampshire plates as much as I like to bitch about New Hampshire plates. They're, you know, the ones who know how.
It's gonna get worse.
You know, they're just, they're making time through there. Everybody knows it's a shorter route and it's not heavily policed and.
Paulette?
Last year, I had a car following me. I was doing the speed limit on forty-one. When it turned to thirty-five, I was doing thirty-five on that curve. And a Jeep from Massachusetts passed me on the double yellow line on that curve.
Oh, I've, I've had that happen.
And, you know, that really burned me because it was ridiculous. You know, if there would have been any kids there or anything, I mean, I, I live way down on forty-one, so it doesn't affect me. But I, I understand that, you know, people need just a little.
So who would coordinate, reaching out to the three different?
Will the chief reach out?
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, that is the end of our fifteen minute public comment section. Discussion items and new business. Paulette Lowry?
Yes.
You are up.
I am up. Well, the status of the Veterans Monument was my first question because unfortunately, I happened to stop by Arthur's Memorial when you, the town had received, the day before, the town had received notification that they weren't doing it. And I was wondering, since the monument is down, has the town contacted someone else to do it? And is it going to go to Vermont or is Arthur's gonna take over? Because what happens is the veterans call us and say, what's happening? Where is it going? When is it gonna be fixed? They're not gonna, you know, come to the town hall and then, you know, and ask those questions.
So my understanding is that Arthur said they couldn't get it out?
That's correct.
We got it out. We are currently searching for another entity to do the work on the monument. I believe you've reached out to two or three different people that can do the work. And there's no reason to go back to Arthur's. It seems as though they didn't want to do it anyway, for whatever reason. But we are actively working on getting it repaired.
When I spoke to them, was the concern of if the monument would have turned, they didn't want the responsibility if it would have cracked or anything like that to replace it.
Yep.
Yeah.
But we are actively trying to find someone to do the work.
It would be nice if you could keep the public, you know, like Public Works Department, when we had all that storms, they, they were saying, you know, hey, we're gonna be cleaning up this section of the road after the storm. And I, you know, I know I found it very, just a little quick note is fabulous. Just that transparency to the people, to our, our population would be wonderful. But that's, you know, that's the only thing. And, and I am on the committee and, you know, I know nothing anymore. So that's the other thing. My second thing is the status of the Veterans Advisory Committee. Well, the thing of it was, it said that there was only one, me, myself and I on the committee board. But last fall, last year, I sent, I had applicants for Ken Sweet, Cheryl Harris, Sharon Schillings, and Gary Bent to be on that committee. They were never notified. In the town report, it shows that it is myself, Henry Faris, Franklin Jones, and Mike Brooks. Someone is not following through with the applications that are requesting to be on the board. And we are, you know, trying to combine the two boards. We can keep them separate. The committee, you know, and let's see here, I, I had it all written down, so I'm, my muzzle. The veterans, I requested the committee be combined for the veterans, with the Veterans Service Committee under one committee with the use of subcommittees to meet, meet, meet the needs of veterans can be met. Especially since folks who contribute to both committees are all on the Veterans Service Committee. I, and something else came out. It's like the Veterans Service Committee and then it was the Veterans Monument Committee and then it was the Advisory Committee. Someone keeps misnaming it, especially the Veterans Advisory Committee. So I, I would like some clarification on that as to what the actual name is. In this year's town report, it says the Veterans Monument Committee. Last year, it said the Veterans Advisory Committee. We need to have that clarified.
Was, were there two Veterans Committees listed in the town report? I'm sorry, I don't remember.
I, yes.
Services and Advisory.
And Monument.
Yes, and then Monument. And the thing of it is, we're both on, you know, trying to get committee members to be on the boards is very difficult. And I know that Sharon had, we had spoken about it and I was already gone south for the winter when it was proposed and it was, you know, declined. They didn't want to combine them. But the fact is, we would have one meeting, we would discuss both committees, and we wouldn't have to be, you know, trying to find committee members. And, you know, like we, we had one that's been absent for quite a while because she's taking courses in, in school. So I would like the town to, you know, reconsider that.
So we have a Veterans Advisory and a Veterans Services Committee?
Correct.
The Veterans Services was listed as the monument or vice versa?
No, no, they, the Veterans Service Committee was listed as a Veterans Service Committee. It's a Veterans Monument Committee that was listed as the Veterans Advisory one year and the Veterans Monument Committee on the other, next year and.
And so what is, was the Advisory slash Monument Committee, what is their scope? Is it broader than just the monument or what is the scope of that committee?
Mike, could you tell?
It's nothing more than, it came into place when they were raising funds to.
Right.
Move the monument. The center portion always was in front of the church forever. It got, Henry spearheaded the whole thing. Volunteer labor fundraised almost entirely all the money that's been expended was fundraised. And the sole mission of that committee was the monument, which is, was nearly complete. Obviously, we've got a big project ahead of us now to get that stone fixed. But as far as I'm concerned, the only thing to be done with that monument going forward is anyone applying to have their name inscribed needs to submit a DD two fourteen to be verified and get added, and that doesn't require a committee.
Well, we, Henry Faris, you know, insisted that we keep the committee going for that purpose. Because if it goes to the town, it may, and many years ago it did, you know, but it, it may go by the wayside and somebody will be neglected. So our committee is basically, you know, talking to the person, getting the DDT fourteen, putting them on the list, and then when we have like, let's say, ten or fifteen names, then we could come to the town to have the town, you know, provide it. So it's not a very active committee, but we feel that with all the work that was done and the fundraising that was done, we don't want it to go by the wayside. So by combining, combining it with the VEOC, you know, we can meet together.
Who are the current members of record for the advisory? Officially on the books?
That are still alive.
Right.
Franklin Jones.
Yes.
Eric Edwards has not, had requested not to be on the committee many years ago, and his name has never been removed. Myself, Henry Faris, Franklin Jones, who is, you know, in his high eighties, and Michael Brooks. And at the time, Mr. Brooks was the town representative of the committee. And now that has been deleted.
Does the committee still meet?
No.
Okay.
Well, we do, but like we had our meeting last week and we discussed the Veterans Monument.
The Veterans Advisory Committee has not met in years.
Well, a lot of the times, Mr. Brooks, that we met and you were supposed to be here with the key to open it up, that we had to meet in the parking lot.
All right, all right.
So having two members here, I'd request each of your input as to are, are you okay with combining the two? Or dissolving one and having the responsibilities roll under?
One hundred percent up to the Selectmen.
I'm asking your opinion now.
Both committees are advisory to the Selectmen with no decision-making authority whatsoever.
I'm just asking your opinion.
My opinion, I just gave it. We, it's not necessary.
To combine?
To have a, we don't need to have a committee anymore.
Okay, thank you.
And I feel that we do need, and I spoke to the.
I don't, I don't have the list in front of me, Paulette, but are you a current member of the Services Committee as well?
Yes, I am.
How many committees do we have?
The two.
Two. So I see no reason not to abolish the Advisory Committee. If its sole purpose was the monument, just abolish the committee. You already serve on the Services Committee and let them take the requests and bring them to Michael.
And this is putting the responsibility now of the monument onto the Services Committee?
I mean, the responsibility lies with us and Michael.
Exactly, exactly. But people contact us. They don't contact the town. There's no transparency whenever anything comes through the town, unfortunately.
Do you refer them to call the town?
At that, at that point, no, we, we haven't referred them to come because I've been taking care of it, you know.
So does the, does the service, does the Services Committee at this point have any responsibilities in terms of the monument?
No.
No.
Okay. Is there, in combining two or abolishing the Advisory Committee, where, in my mind, the only question now is the responsibility of that, what you're saying, Mike, you're saying is the responsibility of the Select Board now to, to manage all that?
I think it can be handled by the town administrator sufficiently without the need of a committee.
But we would like to continue to be involved.
You'll always be a point of contact so long as you exist regardless, because people will reach out just for that reason, but refer them to the town because that is who ultimately takes care of it anyway. I mean, you guys aren't placing the orders for the names or any of those things anyway. It happens upstairs.
No, no, we, we provide the list and, you know, the last time we contacted, you know.
So part of the Veterans Services would be to direct questions to town hall? To field, part of the, the scope of the Services Committee would be to?
If we would be allowed to do that, we would like that.
To field questions and refer?
Correct.
Okay.
That would be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to discontinue or does the committee themselves have to?
You can make a motion to abolish the Advisory Committee.
If they don't have a charter or anything, I think it's up to our permute then? Okay, I guess I make a motion to dissolve the Veterans Advisory slash Monument Committee?
I'll second it. Fall in favor? Aye.
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 All right, so any members looking to join, direct them upstairs to join the Services Committee? And you guys can continue to direct people to Michael for names or take names and bring them to Michael. But we'll continue to do the ordering and you guys can continue to help facilitate.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chief Brooks? I understand you're here to recognize the first responders.
Yes. Well, I gave all the stuff to Linda because I didn't want to damage it. There was a, an EMS call back in April and without violating any privacy rights or anything, it was serious in nature. On arrival of first responders, it was necessary to start CPR immediately. We had an unresponsive person and two of my younger members and one of our police officers, we're the first on the scene, immediately commenced CPR and they were successful in bringing the patient out of arrest. And they were able to get her on an ambulance, transported to the hospital and, to the best of my knowledge, she's alive to this day. And Action Ambulance came to town hall last week and presented these three certificates. And I'm just gonna read one of them and then I'll read all the names together. So it's a certificate of appreciation from Action Ambulance hereby granted to Ralph Chick the Fourth, a firefighter, Garrett Fernback, firefighter, and Jake Martin, officer, for exceptional care provided to cardiac arrest patient in the town of Madison on April twenty-fifth, two thousand four, who is alive and deficit free. And it's signed by Michael Waronka, the president and CEO of Action Ambulance.
Are these guys aware of that?
They, they are not aware.
They aren't out.
They can't be, they work until after five, so they can't be present at the Selectmen's meeting, but.
All, thank you to all three of them for their service, certainly.
Well, one of them is, is, is one of the police officers who, I, I don't believe this is Jake's first.
It is not.
It is, yeah, I remember the last one. So, I mean, our first responders, we're, we're very fortunate. We've got good people that are dedicated and sometimes successful.
That's great.
That is great. Thank you to all three of them.
Thank you, Mark.
I make a motion for a round of applause for their incredible work today.
All right. Phone system upgrade.
So the phone system that we have right now is fourteen years old and it, it's not reliable. We'll come in after the weekend and it'll be flashing. The other day, we worked all day and actually.
The other day, we worked all day and actually I put something on the front page of the website saying, sorry, the phones aren't working, email us and informed you guys that we weren't, didn't have any phone service. So our IT guys came down and got it running again. So it's, it's limp and it's working, but they recommend that we do something and don't wait too long because there'll be a point where that's just not going to come back again. So they gave us two ideas. The first one was just basically the brains and one new phone because those phones have been upgraded since, in 14 years and that, but we can still use our old phones on the system. That's that first one and that's a little under $2,000. And then they have a whole replacement proposal here, including labor parts, warranties and such, for $10,785. Doing some, thinking about it with, with joy this afternoon. We can see the reason why we wouldn't need to buy 20 phone, 20 phones at $285 apiece. You know, just the selectmen's office alone, I mean, there's three phones in there and that's more than we ever need at once in there. And there's other options too that could come up for like, what you call like portable kind of idea or something like that if you needed it.
Yeah.
It'd be a lot less expensive than.
There, you know, the phones have a lot going on on them. Not all offices would need to have all of that.
The fancy stuff.
Yeah, all the fancy stuff. It could just be a more simple phone.
So my thought was if we can get the brains and get sure, so that we can be assured that we have a reliable phone system, maybe see what the budget's looking like at the end of the year with the projects line and see if maybe at that point, maybe get some phones to go, new phones to go with the system. See if there's not as fancy a phone that would still do what we need to do. Because really what we use the phones for is to get to the brain, to get to our, you know, transferring and voicemail and all that kind of stuff. I don't feel like we're lacking with what that phone does for us now, so.
You can even downgrade, get rid of the voicemail.
That's not happening. So, so that's, that's my thought on phones. It's just important to have something reliable.
Yeah, I think that's a, a good plan to replace that.
It's the same brain on both quotes regardless. I assume if we decided we wanted to upgrade the phones afterwards, we could still do that.
Exactly. He's, that was, that was Rob's idea was just, you know, I said, give me what we have to do.
Yeah.
And give me what we could do. And this is like we were saying, maybe we don't need, you know, a 200 something dollar or that expensive of a phone.
For all of them, yeah.
For the quote, so it has the, the brains for 1675 and then one handset, which is the full handset for 298. And you, you had mentioned there's a group discount.
Right, so it's.
The more.
A little, what, $13 less a phone if you bought volume phones?
So would you, would we want to do just the 1675 now and not replace any of the phones?
We don't have to replace any of the phones. No, he just was doing that, I think, more like a sales thing. See if you like this phone, it's really cool.
And see how much just one costs, go for more.
Yeah.
Get the discount.
We're at the transfer station because the one at, at transfer station does not work.
Oh, phone, oh, new phone.
So I don't know if it's a phone issue. And the phone is probably older than me.
I can find out.
Because we're, because we're using cell, we use our personal cell phones up there, which is fine, it's no big deal, but keep, you know, people can't get a hold of us.
Sure.
Not like we have.
Do you like it that way?
Huh?
Don't you like it that way?
Yeah.
Is that a different system? It is, it's just one single line going into the, over there they have.
So I don't know if.
Maybe you need a new handset.
Just a basic, I mean, we need a basic phone.
Right.
You know, take voicemail.
A Tiffany rotary phone?
Yeah, it's the old fashioned handset.
Yeah.
After last week, we'd all be better off with those rotary phones.
I'll look into that.
Well, based on this, we have to, we have to do the brain to get this thing so that it doesn't crash every other week. I don't think we need the handset right at the moment, so I would make a motion that we spend the 1675 on the new brain and get it up and running and then revisit it closer to the end of the year.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Before you leave that, do we have verification? Is it modular? Like if we needed to, could we do one phone at a time over a period of time? Do we lose any connectivity between different branches of Town Hall if we?
I don't believe so because this one, we could have just had one phone that was different than the other ones. He said we can keep all those, so. But I'll double check with him to make sure that we won't cause a problem.
Make sure before we
Right.
Lose our volume discount.
I assume they actually need a signature on this estimate?
Oh, yeah.
Although I'm not going to sign it because it has 298 on it.
Oh, all right.
I'll talk with them.
Just figure out what they need.
Okay.
I feel like we have a good rapport with them.
Could you sign?
Full business, 2021 tax deed, property list review for inspections.
When Mike brought this a few weeks ago, we said we'd look at it again closer to when deeding was coming up so that if you guys wanted to send Bob to look at any properties, that it could be, it could be a chance of us taking. So a few people have dropped off the list from when you gave us this before.
Yes, it's, I don't have the list in front of me, but just to.
Just going to say, is there an expectation that a few more?
To make your review easy, if you look down at the bottom, there's the parcel status in 2023. It kind of lets you know when they paid the prior year. All routinely, this list is people that are always in this position and 99 times out of 100, they pay before the deadline. But there are three properties where it says that there was no 2020 lien. On those three, I have no experience with what they're going to do. And two of those, 104, 134, and 204, 25 are both occupied with structures and 116, 67 is land only. And I gave you a one-page printout from the tax collect system, which down below the receivable gives you a, a street address. If it has a, typically if it has a number, that means it has a, it has a structure. And if it has like the top one that just says Winter Road, that's, that's vacant land.
So basically if we, do you want Bob Boyd to go out and check any of the structures?
I would think if, if I were in your seat, I might want him to just go check out, see what 104, 134, what does that look like and 204, 25, just because I have no.
Experience with this.
No experience with those taxpayers in coming up against the deeding deadline. I don't know what they're going to do.
When is that deadline again?
The 20th of August.
August.
So this is, they, the taxes have not been paid since 2021?
This is the, we are deeding the 2021 tax lien. So that means unpaid property taxes from 2021 forward have not been paid.
Okay. But they were paid, everybody's paid up as of 2020?
Well, right, it's a three-year, a three-year cycle. Every, like this year, we're, we're deeding the 2021 tax lien year. Next year will be 22, et cetera. Basically, under the law of the state of New Hampshire, you have three years within which to pay your taxes.
I'd like to have Bob go take a look at those two.
104, 35, 34.
Yeah, numbers two and three, yeah.
Yep.
And what do we mean by Bob checking them out?
Well, see if there's any obvious hazards or some reason that we wouldn't, that we wouldn't be. There are, there's a couple of reasons why we can say we don't want to take a property.
There's specific statutory provisions where the state law commands you to take the property because it's only fair to everybody else that pays their taxes that there be a consequence for not paying. But there are a few limited circumstances where you can say, we know we're supposed to, but because of these existing conditions, we don't want to own that.
Like a barrel full of oil in the middle of the front yard?
Any hazards kind of.
Right, it's laid, it's laid out in the statute, but. And there is one on that list, since you're talking about it, that number four, you, you, the board of selectmen, have a payment agreement.
Yep.
She doesn't have it with my office, it's with yours. And she's not going to pay by the deadline, so I presume you'll sign a deed waiver, giving her the extra couple of months to satisfy her agreement with you.
She's been pretty good.
She's been very good.
Yeah.
She's held up her side today.
Yeah. All right, Bob, will you go take a look at those two when you get a chance? I know you're super busy.
I give you a list tomorrow.
Yeah, I was going to say, give me a list, just highlight it and I'll take a look at it. Thank you. Do you have any questions on that? All right, select and gray, do you have a list?
I do not. You're welcome.
Thank you. I do get hungry early. Mr. Aruda?
The drawdown is coming into line like usually does, getting close to August and September. We're at 56.2% of the year and we have burnt through the budget at 56.1% of the year. So we're just about even, usually comes even about the sun of the year. Transfer station, through this last weekend, we've taken in $37,440 in fees against last year's $36,151, about a 3% increase. Anecdotally, a lot of, a lot of second homeowners, people from out of state that have stickers on their vehicles, which they're, they're fine. But it seems like it's the largest amount I've ever seen. And people who are paying without stickers, short-term rental people, the last two weeks have been the highest two weeks of the year. They're paying, but they're using. That's all I got.
On behalf of all home week committee, in a sense, I'd like, can we talk to Vidium about moving those reels so that we have some parking up there?
Sure.
I don't know if they're, and Josh isn't here tonight, but I don't know if there's another spot they can stick them so that we have that section for parking. And potentially ask them to clean up their mess over here outside that trailer. And I will note that I did have a rather heated remark for a couple of them that were spinning out of this parking lot at about Mach 900 when we were playing softball, so. They, they obliged and were very apologetic, but. That's it for me.
What do we use for phone service?
Consolidated for the two more years on a three-year contract.
Linda?
Okay.
Lieutenant?
Very busy. We're keeping up pace with it though.
Nothing crazy to report? Perfect. Chief?
On the tax collection side, I gave you a copy of the report as of the end of the day. Today, we're sitting at about just a shade under 94% collection for 2024 first half, which is very much in line with what is typical, so we're in good shape. Done the best I can to help the cash flow. It's going to slow down dramatically. The due date was last Thursday, so a few more will trickle in, but we'll get right around 96% and that'll be it. Recovered the deeding FEMA update. Apparently, there's a rumor going around town that the town of Madison is not getting any money from FEMA because paperwork hasn't been filed and we missed the opportunity to get that money. And I guess, I have no idea. The information came from a selectmen's meeting, which I know I missed a couple of months worth of selectmen's meetings, so I can't comment, but I would like some support when I say that that statement is just blatantly false.
Absolutely.
There's no way anybody at the board of selectmen could have said that because while I'm not day on, stay on with this work, I have gotten FEMA everything that they've asked me for and then some. So there's nothing that hasn't been done that can be done. There's still work that's to be completed that hasn't been completed yet. And I spoke with Josh this week. I know the paving patches on Allard Hill have been pushed off to September because of a scheduling of the paving contractor. That's one of the biggest things left to be completed. On top of that, the project manager for FEMA, they call him a PDMG, the guy that we started with, I believe this July event was declared in September, if I remember correctly. So between September of '23 and now, I'm on my third project manager with FEMA because of their cycle of how they operate. So there's been a learning curve. Each time you change, it kind of slows the process down because that person's got to educate himself or herself with what's going on with the projects and the damage that occurred in Madison months ago that they are just not familiar with because they've never even been here. So, but we did get the first check for the Colby Hill Road project in the neighborhood of $263,000 and we actually got that check. It somehow got sent in with my mail, so like I saw the check, I know we got it. And I'm quite confident that Linda passed it along to the treasurer to be deposited, so. We got $263,000, that's a far cry from no money.
Now, where, I, I'm not sure where they got the comment, but to the best of my knowledge, it didn't come from here.
Well, it came from the beach. The two people that talked to me, and of course, they had no idea standing at my window because apparently the town clerk's office is also the complaint department.
I thought that was mine.
They were. No, I always catch them before they get to your door. And the lady was just spouting off this morning, and so I, I walked right up to her. I said, oh, where, where did you get that information? Of course, she said she got it at the beach. It was in a conversation. I said, well, who was in the conversation? Well, I don't remember. I said, what did they look like? Well.
Like a person.
All I got was it was a man, looked like you, you know, a man, looked like you. I said, oh, what, dark hair, light hair, mustache, beard? What, give me something. And they just didn't want to say, they knew who it was, but they didn't want to say. In any event, it's just, I've got much work left to do, but I'm on top of it right now. They're working on one project at a time with this new guy. There's three remaining projects from the July event and then the one project from Modoc Hill that are outstanding. They're all in process and in good standing with FEMA. We're not lost out on anything. But this new project manager for FEMA is taking one at a time. So they finished Colby Hill, that was done before he took over. Now he's on board, now he's working on the, the road culverts on Colby Hill because they got separated out from the road itself. That's, that's the one that's on the shortlist right now and it's almost done. And then they'll move on to the other, the other roadwork that is complete already. That'll be the next one. And then the shortlist of four or five roads that still have work yet to be done so that they can be completed, but. The update is we're in good standing with FEMA. They have everything that we can give them at this time and we're actively working on moving everything forward so that there will be more money coming. It's just, it's going to take time. And a side note to that whole thing, FEMA is the roadblock. And a side note to that whole thing, FEMA is the roadblock. Once approvals are given, we got a check, the check comes from the state of New Hampshire because the feds release the money to the state, the state releases the money to the towns. We got that. Once we got approval of the project and signed the final paperwork, we got a check within two weeks from the state. The state is not, they're not obstructing the flow of the money to get to us. They're, they're moving it to us as quickly as they can once the approval's given. That's a good thing for, the state's helping us as much as they can. Uh, next, uh, PFAS, unfortunately, I have no update. I still haven't received a report after that second round of testing. I don't I don't know. I, I kind of have taken the approach to letting sleeping dogs lie because.
So was it Reed and, Reed and Barton, Reed Morton?
Wilcox.
Wilcox, Wilcox. Um, they haven't, they took, they took tests and haven't provided results?
Well, they, 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 I, we paid in the, in the, I don't know, you call it a contract that we have, but the proposed work was involved phase one of drilling the wells. And then phase two was sample number one, phase three was sample number two. And then after that, we're supposed, I anticipated a report, which will also go to the state and then the development of a course of action going forward. So we're waiting. I know the second sample was taken. And we just haven't, and that's been about a month.
Yeah, I bet.
So, but I can, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out by email to the, my contact and just I just hate to ask for bad news because it's, it's not gonna be good news.
No, no, but we expected that. And if we wait too long, then we don't know what to put on the warrant.
Well, we, yeah, we got to start, yeah. I'll, I'll reach out tomorrow, see if I can get a stat. I, I anticipated a, you know, a book-sized report.
I mean, with all the bad news in it.
Well, right.
Did we get a report shortly after the first sample was taken?
Just the, just the printout of the, of the lab results with a short explanation, but.
And they never saw seeing it and not knowing what any of them meant.
Well, right, but it's what the, the trend is, is the, the values are, they are diminishing, but not fast enough. And I don't anticipate, I mean, with a month between samples, it's not gonna go down that much, but.
Yeah, because the samples, I want to say from twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two were four hundred and something in the
Right, they went.
It's ten is what we're supposed to be at, ten hundred.
Right, but they went from four hundred and something to two hundred and something, so.
Two hundred and something. In a year and a half or so, but, yeah.
But in any event, I'll, I'll reach out and see what the status of
And I, if you need help with that, I'm willing, ready, able to help because I've been doing research on it and the funding available to us. So if we can.
Well, it's gonna come before, it's not gonna be, I'm not, I'm just, I'm the point man. They're, they're gonna send a report and then I'm gonna bring it to your desk and we're gonna have to, depending on what it says, formulate something. We're gonna need more funding and go to town meeting with some project, uh, proposal of action that we're gonna have to do. Until we get that report and recommendations, we don't know what that's gonna be. We're all gonna be involved. Uh, we already kind of, New Hampshire Monuments is who I've been in contact with, sent the gentleman a whole bunch of pictures. He gave me the impression he was gonna take a ride up here, they're located in Hooksett, and take a look at everything with his own eyes. I haven't, I haven't seen anybody, but I haven't been standing looking out the window either. But I would assume if he drove all the way up here from Hooksett, he'd come inside town hall and introduce himself.
And Arthur's did return the deposit.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
And that's, that's the end of my list.
Was there a second company mentioned? For the monument?
No, there's, those were the only two that, that I could find preliminarily were Arthur's and, and and they both use the same stone cutter out of Barry Bama. Apparently, it's, it's, I mean, get to the point of, it's very specialized and only so many people to do it.
Right. All right. Mrs. O'Donnell?
Uh, let's see. Well, first of all, thank you for the tent, Mike and Adam and everybody involved. Um, we really appreciate that being up, um, before, you know, way before Old Home Week. Summer camp has been great. Lots of field trips happening. We're going to the ocean on Friday. I had to cancel swimming lessons for tomorrow because of the weather. So that was my kind of announcement to you guys. Um, so we are actually looking into keeping the bus and doing something else free, just like a hike or something. So, um, but it is supposed to be like showers, so we just wanted to make that call before it gets too late.
I saw fall sports registrations are out.
Yes, I put soccer and field hockey out already. I've talked to the coaches. So we are starting to get things rolling there. Flag football, um, I've also talked to them.
Flag football, are we doing that or is Freedom doing it again?
They are doing it, yeah.
And inviting Madison to it.
But they want us to help with soccer and field hockey, like us take Freedom.
Understandably, but the last time they did flag football, nothing against them, they do a great job, but nobody will let them join in on the fun because they don't have insurance.
Yeah.
Are they going to try to go south again to Interlakes?
I haven't heard that yet. Yeah.
Same coaches?
Yes.
Field hockey and soccer?
Field hockey, yes.
Anything else? You don't need anything this week?
No, I feel good. Last, it's, it's been, I've been a little high maintenance the last few weeks. You guys did it, got it done.
She's gotta run home real quick. She'll be right back.
Yes. Mike?
I know, I got a text message at like eleven. Hey, the tent looks great.
I, I messaged you too. Thank you.
Anything to add, Bob? You can't hide from me out there.
Yeah, I know you.
It's so nice and quiet out here.
I know, it's so nice. I'm approaching three hundred permits, that's combination building and mechanical permits. I've got probably twenty plus between the ones on my desk to be looked at and the ones in the pending folder on my wall. And I just ask people to please submit your applications at least thirty days ahead of when you want to start. Because I just, I'll get one permit out and I get three more applications. So whenever the order they come in, sometimes it takes a while to get through, so dropping it off and expecting to start Monday isn't gonna happen for me. I just can't get out that quick. I'm also dealing with zoning and construction complaints, so that takes up a lot of time. And that slows down the permit process with time spent on those things, so just keep that in mind.
Thank you. I didn't miss anyone, right? Signature items.
They might look a tiny bit different. They, they updated the spreadsheet from the state. Same information, just two.
Is there a spot?
You know, Mike said, word deadlines is popping around in my head and there was a conversation about PFAS probably a month ago. And I asked if there were deadlines from DES, so I don't know, but we're talking about PFAS? That's where the word, the only word I can think of in terms of deadlines in U was when we're talking PFAS.
No, we haven't missed any deadlines on anything. We got a
No, I know, but we just, I'm just trying to rack my brain as to why someone would think we missed a FEMA deadline.
Unless, um, yeah, I don't know. As long as we're doing what we're doing.
Well, we get the, the proposed course of action from our engaged contractor was approved by the state DES. I'm assuming they're waiting for the same report that we are.
All right, while Joy's finishing that up, we'll make a motion to enter non-public session under R S A ninety-one A colon three, room numeral two, little A, the dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him unless the employee affected one, has the right to a meeting and two, request the meeting be opened, in which case the request shall be granted. Have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Joy, aye.
Joy, aye.
Adam, aye. Thank you, Dr. Henry.